All right, I guess we'll start with some resolutions for the new year and adopting hours of operation here and chairman and meeting dates. One thing, I was just looking through the second resolution, the B one about the, oh, no, it's the C, the part C, third paragraph down on the daily rate for detention, it says, whereas if the town of Superior commits a person to the detention center of the county. Anyway, we're going to talk about the town of Superior and their relationship with law enforcement in Mineral County. I was wondering, was the previous one, did it omit Alberton or do they have a different arrangement?
That is exactly what our previous one said, and I did send that to Mike before I had you preview it to ask him.
Well, I think they do have separate, what do they call that?
Yeah, well, we have separate schedule of payment for who's going to be the city judge in each town.
Yeah, but don't we have separate contracts for Superior and Alberton as far as law enforcement?
And that too, but this one's talking about when somebody's arrested under the jurisdiction of the town. So like if somebody, if somebody's committed a burglary in St. Regis, that's not incorporated, so the sheriff's office incarcerates them and that's a county. But then it says here, whereas if the town of Superior commits a person to the detention center, they don't have their own police department, so they're contracted with the county. So if a deputy arrests somebody in the city of Superior pending trial, the cost must be paid by the county except as provided and blah, 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 blah. So I'm just wondering if that same wording is not applicable to Alberton or do we need to insert them?
Is Mike here? I don't know.
Yeah, because if the department corrections the arresting agency, then the probation violator are paid by the county and with the district court. Anyway, all that stuff is talking about Superior, but I didn't see anything about Alberton and stop me. Do we have a different arrangement with them on their arrestees? If somebody breaks into the bar in Alberton and gets picked up?
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system. 4063702415 is not available. At the tone, please record your message. When you finish recording, you may hang up or press 1 for more options.
Hey, this is Dwayne. Would you give us a call here, commissioners? We got a question on something there for you. Oh, here we go. Hello?
Yeah, what's up?
We got a question here. I'll have Roman here.
Yeah, I was just looking, Sheriff, on the, there's a resolution here for the commissioners setting the daily rate for payment. And the third paragraph, the third whereas says, whereas if the town of Superior commits a person to the detention center of the county in which the city or town is located for a reason other than detention pending trial for or detention for service of a sentence for violating an ordinance of the city or town, the cost must be paid by the county except as provided in 732-2245. So anyway, the reference, do we have to have Alberton inserted in there too? That's an incorporated town. Is the same agreement about who pays the cost of their arrestees in the city the same or is this something unique and we just leave the resolution as it is that includes and only speaks of the town of Superior?
I didn't even know. I don't know. Probably else.
I guess it was like this last year. I didn't happen to notice it, but I didn't know if that was an Allen question or a sheriff question.
No, it's a good question. I mean, probably a sheriff question. I just never thought of it, I guess.
Neither did we.
You know? I guess it's my bad.
Let me look at previous ones.
Okay, well, maybe we'll look further back and see what the language says from maybe five years ago.
Yeah, then I do have to get on there. I mean, if we're going to charge them, which we rarely have anybody arrested in Superior, we have more arrested from Superior, but I can't even imagine the last one from the town of Alberton. But even if we did, I guess we need to get on our agenda and talk to them about it before we make it.
And then you better, and then read this resolution because it also says, if this doesn't happen, then it is what happened in 732, you know, that law. So it sounds like there's times when the county does pay for someone to be held here, but not in other instances if they're not being held for...
Yeah, so we're going to need to know that.
We could adopt that resolution at a later date.
Probably a difference between a felony and a misdemeanor too. Yeah, maybe we'll have to hold off on this one until we, we'll hold off on this one and not today until we figure out what the differences are and if they apply to Alberton.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Robin, is that C, resolution C?
Yeah, C, right. Third paragraph down.
Think he was in bed.
I don't know. Maybe he's been out all night on racks.
Yeah. Didn't hear the siren go off too much last night.
All right, so the first item of business C. Resolution 1-7-2022A, reorganizing the board of the county commissioners. So it requires the Mineral County Board of Commissioners to select a presiding officer, what is now known as the term chair, most commonly referred to, which is the presiding officer.
I nominate Roman Zalway.
I'll second that.
You sure?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Guys, I'm more than happy to share the wealth.
Well, the only thing is you do have to give up that code.
Do you want to be vice chair, Dwayne?
I don't care.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dwayne as vice chair.
Okay, I'll second that. So we have motion number one, Commissioner Simons, seconded by Johnson, to appoint me as the presiding officer. And the other motion is to appoint Mr. Simons as the vice chair. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we did two motions in one fell swoop, but I don't think there was going to be any argument from Lori to not, she nominated Dwayne, so.
On the boards, Dwayne, do you want to take over the hospital board?
Well, I'm going to be up there four days a week. Yeah, I mean, could.
Where is that list?
It'll be remotely. Well, I don't even, what time do they meet and when do they meet?
Noon on the, like, fourth Thursday or whatever.
I could try it Zoom, I mean...
Yeah, they Zoom them all, but...
So currently what we have Mr. Simons on is health board chair and human resource council, and you're asking about the hospital board? When do they have those, Lori?
The, I don't know, like, the fourth Thursday at noon.
So I do have from noon to one o'clock every day up there for lunch.
It's a two-hour meeting?
From where, are you back at work?
No, I went to school up at Pavlo.
Oh.
For nine months.
It's usually the fourth Thursday from noon till about...
About just four days a week.
Two. Just sorry, I've had enough of it.
You want to do HRC then? You want to do HRC?
I don't care. I can take back over HRC if you want, if you want to do the hospital board.
Well, yeah, because that would be, I mean, I can probably do these Zoom on that day.
Do they still Zoom the HRC ones?
Yeah, they give you that option, yeah. You can either go in there if you want lunch or...
Okay, so we're just interchanging those two. So Commissioner Simons will have health board chair and hospital board. And Commissioners Johnson will have human resource council, transportation board, local emergency planning committee, conservation district, DUI task force, and resource coalition. And then I'll have RCND, the resource conservation development, the BRAD economic development board, union negotiator, county employee drug testing, area six agency on aging, juvenile detention, and weed board. Does that sound correct to everybody?
You'll have to change those on there and then we can sign it.
Okay, so resolution number 1-7-2022 includes the chair and the vice chair that we already discussed and voted on, and then it also would be to confirm and pass the organization of those outline boards that we sit on, that I stated, Commissioner Simons and Johnson and myself. All right, so I guess we have to have a vote to pass that and then we can sign.
I'll make a motion that we pass resolution number 1-7-2022A with said changes.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Further discussion, Madam Secretary, do you want me to scratch or write that?
Sure, that would be helpful. Yes, thank you.
I'll let Erin know to send you the stuff.
And I'll let Erin know.
Okay, all in favor of the resolution 1-7-2022A with that reorganization of duties and boards, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Just wait until I make those changes.
It's up to you.
Oh, I thought you, I just did it by hand. That's why I was asking you.
Oh, I thought you were doing it for me to give me, and I was going to say, well, I do have it in my notes, but that would be...
Is that all right? Not too bad, a chicken scratch?
No, the chicken scratch is good.
Okay, and then we have part B. Resolution providing for public participation and establishing regular meeting dates and times of the board of Mineral County Commissioners for the calendar year 2022. So it goes on to talk about including the public, having boards posted, weekly agenda will be posted in a later than 48 hours preceding the next meeting. And we're all, are we in an agreement to just continue with the regular meetings of business to be held on Fridays?
Yes.
Yep.
I make that motion.
From nine until when every business is completed, is that what it says?
Yeah, so from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM every Friday or until all business is complete, all county commissioners are open to the public unless closed, as provided by statute. All right. So this resolution...
I'll make a motion where you approve resolution 1-7-2022B.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Could I have one question? When you said that, did you say to accept 1-7, resolution 1-7?
To approve.
To approve, okay.
And then we're skipping resolution part C because of the question on the town of Alberton. So now we're on resolution part D, the resolution to establish travel, meals, and lodging rates for the calendar year. And of course, as in the past, we just adopt what the state recommends and Mako recommends. This year, it looks like the mileage rate is 58 and a half cents per mile.
Okay, so can you send that out to the department heads?
And the meal rates for breakfast for people traveling in-state are 7.50 for breakfast, 8.50 for lunch, and 14.50 for dinner, evening meal, a total of $30.50 a day if they are gone the entire day. And then there's a different rate for out-of-state, which are listed, but they're few and far in between, anybody travels out-of-state for trains. And the lodging rate, the in-state lodging reimbursement rate is, this year is $96 plus tax, with the exception of some high-end communities listed in Exhibit A. Exhibit A includes different rates for Big Sky, West Yellowstone, and Gardner, they're $124, and Palina is $103, Kalispell, Whitefish is $96, but different from July to August, and they're $177, peak tourism time. And Missoula, June 1st to September 30th is $131 a day, probably for the tourism as well. So those lodging rates and the mileage rate to be adopted are as stated.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 1-7-2022D.
Aye, seconded.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And then part E is a resolution to set official holiday for the calendar, the recognized holidays for the employees, which we follow the state of Montana's recognized state holidays. And this year, it looks like there's, there are normally 10, but since this is a midterm election year, Election Day is going to be a holiday.
November?
Yeah, November, Tuesday, November 8th. Otherwise, it's New Year's, New Year's Day, which will actually be observed December 31. That doesn't make sense.
No, it should be...
New Year's Day is on a Sunday.
On a Sunday.
Should be Monday.
So it'd be Monday.
I took that off, and last year we had trouble with this too. I did take it off their site, but I'll go back and recheck that. Yep. I know, I did double-check that particular one.
How about Labor Day, it says it's recognized on the...
Oh, wait, because that would be January 2023, that's why.
Oh, okay.
I maybe looked at 2022. Because January 1st would actually be the second, or I mean the 31st, right?
So it should be, January 2nd would be the holiday, right?
Because that's the month.
I think what Don's saying is that this year, the holiday was recognized on Friday the 31st.
Yes.
Because January 1 of '22 was Saturday, so that's the crossover.
So next year it'll be Sunday, right?
Right, so it'll be January, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we can double-check.
I studied that a couple times because I didn't think that was right, yeah.
So like 4th of July, so it's Monday, July 4th, is that right then?
We still have to double-check this one.
Yep, that one, okay. So and then also Labor Day, shown at September 5, Monday?
Yes.
Okay, so everything's right. The only thing that was wrong was our January 22, the holiday was actually recognized on the 31st of '21.
Do I have December 26th for Christmas recognized on this 26th?
It does, so everything's right. It was just that snafu of the 21 to 22 on New Year's. Okay, so then the other ones are Martin Luther King Day, January 17, President's Day, February 21, Memorial Day, May 30, Independence Day, July 4, Labor Day, September 5, Columbus Day, October 10, General Election Day, November 8, Veterans Day, November 11, Thanksgiving Day, November 24, and Christmas Day, December 26. Those are the state-recognized holidays, which we typically adopt. Because sometimes they're different than the federal-recognized holiday.
Yeah, I thought it was, yeah, it's an error. I studied it, I don't know how I got it wrong.
Well, it's kind of understandable, 21 to 22. Who here said we should adopt this resolution of those recognized holidays?
I'll make a motion where you approve resolution number 1-7-2022E.
Aye, we seconded.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 You just need to cross that, December 31st, not January 2nd.
Okay. And that's Jan 2nd, so...
Monday.
Monday.
Yep, January 7, 2023.
Okay. All right, so that's it for those resolutions. Then we'll just check on that one. Okay. All right, so now we don't have anything until 10 o'clock for the subdivision. All right, thank you. Till 10, half an hour. 10 o'clock, so for Mary and the camera, it was rolling. We've got our 10 o'clock appointment here with the, well, how is it on the agenda? The public hearing, public hearing for Lower Meadows Major Subdivision, preliminary plat approval action item. So I guess we'll do, maybe I'll go around and do introductions, and a lady on the phone wanted to visit via telephone, she's from Pennsylvania, Janine Lavelle is on the phone. So Janine, we'll go around the room and introduce, and you'll know who's sitting in the room. I'm Roman Zalway, County Commissioner, East End.
Dwayne Simons, County Commissioner, West End.
Lori Johnson, County Commissioner, Central District.
Andy Short, Mineral County Environmental Health and Planning.
Candace Hampton, Mineral County Environmental Health and Planning.
Anna Bickers, IMAG Consultant.
Paul Forsting, IMAG.
Danny Oberwiser, IMAG.
Al Dunlap, Regent Realty.
Dave Levinson.
Okay. Could you hear everybody? Dave Levinson and three people from IMAG and Al Dunlap from Realty and Candace and Andy from the planning board. So, okay, so Andy, I guess take it away, or are you letting someone else take it away?
Yeah, no, thanks, Roman. Yeah, I think what we'll do here is we'll allow the applicant to present the project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, commissioners, for having us. I've got some prepared words here that I'll just run through while we look at these slides. Start by thanking Andy again and his staff for helping us facilitate this process. We don't have any planning board members, but I want to thank them for helping us and especially for the recommendation of approval. As it's aware, we're here to present the final plan of our Lower Meadows subdivision. You know, there's been a lot of effort spent planning this project for, with the goal to provide the community well-planned and safe development that we feel is a much-needed development in the Alberton area. Project is just east of town in the lower field between Adams and I-90. The property's been historically used as agricultural and livestock grazing, but most recently it's gone unused and undeveloped. The property consists of a cemetery lot as well as a cell tower lot, both of which will have legal access preserved. We're proposing 36 total lots, 35 of which are single-family houses, and one commercial lot, which is labeled Lot 36 on very eastern extent. So with the available acreage, which is about 41.2, that makes our average lot size would be about one. This slide kind of shows where the small business lot is, like I said, at the eastern extent, between the Onram to I-90 and Adams Street. Between the commercial lot and the residential lots is Kerchie Creek, which you can see in blue there. Kerchie Creek is going to be undeveloped and preserved minus an existing irrigation line that comes from the Clark Fork River under I-90 and up through that gully. The residential lots will be accessed with a loop road with two approaches off Adams. The road will be 20 feet wide, paved asphalt with a five-foot wide pedestrian trail along the north side. All three accesses off Adams have been approved by MDT. There's also a traffic study done as part of the review by HDR and found that the project will not have any significant impact to the existing road network. The lots will all be served with individual wells and drain fields. With the property's existing water rights, 36 lots is the max density with the available water rights, meaning there would be any future division or future subdivision of these lots to increase its density anytime in the, you know, possible at all, unless the town of Alberton were to provide its water system and allow connection to it. What you don't see on our slide is parkland. The developer would rather just pay cash and lose, which is an option through the subdivision regulations. With the vicinity to the town's park, it just makes more sense to have the money go to the county and help maintain that park or improve it, or go to the Peak Foundation, however the county kind of sees best fit with that money. The calculation for that cash and lose, $15,008. So this slide is just kind of a snapshot of where we are today and how far we've come to get to today. You know, we started evaluating the feasibility of this property back in 2019. You know, we spent a lot of time evaluating it, we just had a lot of discussions with, you know, many reviewing agencies, DEQ being a main one, MDT being another major one. We talked with DNRC, French Town Road Fire, the Health Department, the Historical Society, and the County Conservation District. Took all their comments and incorporated them into this plan that we hope emphasizes a safe environment for the community and, again, one that meets the community's needs. So kind of how the slide's showing, like I said, back in 2019, we first looked at it. Throughout 2020, we worked through a feasibility phase to determine the best use and the yield of the property. Our first conversation with the county and Andy was in January of 2021. Throughout 2021, we coordinated groundwater monitoring to make sure drain fields were adequate, you know, were able to be used adequately. We spent even more time with DEQ confirming that the drain fields would meet the strict non-degradation analysis and adjacent estate water rules. June, we officially submitted. August, we presented to the town council in Alberton, which was the first opportunity for the public to see the project and provide comment. October, Andy and his staff deemed our application sufficient so that we could proceed with the public hearing process. And November, we met with the planning board, they recommended approval. And that brings us here today, which is the last step in the entitlement process. If we are approved today, the next steps is we have to submit the official DEQ review to make sure all the sanitation rules are followed and proceed with construction documentation, construction, and final plating. If everything kind of goes according to plan with no hitches, we might see construction and housing as early as the second half of this year. Speaking of housing, we wanted to touch on a study done by the... Speaking of housing, we wanted to touch on a study done by the county for Mineral County last year, I believe. And the study showed that, just like the rest of Montana, Mineral County's growing and that Albertson specifically is growing more than anywhere else in the county. It's showed that, you know, homeownership is increasing while renter-occupied housing is decreasing, and it showed that 98% of the housing in the Albertson area is already over 20 years old. It's easy to argue with this data that people are moving to the area, they want to own in-house, and the housing there is currently outdated. So these 35 homes could certainly help with that demand. This slide, which I won't run through specifically, but it outlines the town of Albertson's annexation process. During our subdivision review, we've been informed that Albertson wants to annex the property and provide sewer and water. When subdivisions occur needing annexation, the two processes are typically completed concurrently. Even though that they can be completed concurrently, it's important to understand that annexation and subdivision review are completely two separate statutory review procedures, with separate rules, and separate approvals. Over a year ago, in December of 2020, we reached out to Albertson regarding the project connecting to its systems, and we were informed that they were at capacity and there was no way that we could connect. Publics, providing public service, services is a state requirement to annex a property. Therefore, we understood that was completely off the table. That was one of the main bases for our project design and what you see with our plans today. If the town is still wanting to annex, you know, they had more than a year to start their process, hold their public notifications, evaluate their systems, improve their systems if needed. And if that would have happened, they could have been here today to, for you to vote on annexation, but that didn't. So we're just here to focus on subdivision. And even though that they coincide many times and it's hard to talk about one without the other, we asked the board to make sure that you focus on only the subdivision approval piece today. This project just, or sorry, this slide just kind of shows why we think this is appropriate. You know, what makes it good to subdivision? Does it fit a community plan? Is it the best use for its location? Is it safe? Is it needed? We believe that's a yes to all of them. It makes sense to extend Albertson's housing east as it's the only contiguous property to town that you can allow density and housing to expand. The environmental analysis of our project or our review indicated no adverse impacts. It showed us both safe for the existing and future neighbors, and we're really excited that these 35 houses are going to bring 35 potential families to the, you know, the nice Albertson neighborhood that's already in place. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul Forsting, our head planner. He wants to touch on a few conditions.
Yeah, Paul Forsting, IMAG, for the record. We do have a variance in this application. It's a variance from the streetlight requirements along the road. That was discussed at the planning board, and the planning board said, "Well, you don't have to do streetlights along the whole road. You just have to put them at the entries, entries and exits." And we agree with that. And so we just wanted to, you know, bring that up again, let that, let you know that we're okay with the planning board's recommendation for streetlights at the access points, but we hope not to have them throughout the whole site. Condition number 20 is a relatively standard condition regarding cluster mailboxes. The applicant would like the opportunity to have individual mailboxes if the post office would approve it. That's something I'd like to ask you commissioners to add to that condition is just a slight, just a wording change that says, "If the post office allows individual mailboxes, then we can have them." I think people prefer to have mail at their house if the post office is willing to do it. I know the most, the post office is generally trying to have cluster mailboxes, but if we can talk to them and if it's not a burden for them, we'd like the opportunity to have individual mailboxes. Though, uh, one, uh, different, last condition I wanted to talk to you about is condition 38. There's a requested no build, no alteration buffer 25 feet from the top of the banks of the Kerchie, Kerchie Creek drainage. We're not planning on putting any buildings in that area, but we do have our, we do have it, our irrigation is already in Kerchie Creek, and I'll show you that right here in this example. The shaded area right in the middle is Kerchie Creek. What we're looking at is the Lot 36, the easternmost lot on the project, and this is our commercial lot. A small commercial business is going to go here. It's a really tight lot, and Kerchie Creek is a dry gulch with ponderosa trees in it. We've got some photos I'll show you from it. So it's not a riparian area. We, it is, you know, it's got slopes. We're not going to disturb it, but we do have our irrigation does go through the middle of it already. So we just want to make sure that this condition isn't preventing us from putting our irrigation there. And then we drew in that red line, the red buffer, that 25-foot buffer where it would go from that, and that's right where our well needs to go for MDQ permitting. So we also wanted to ask that we could just make sure we could put our well in that setback area. So, just to be clear, we want to make sure that condition 38 doesn't prevent us from keeping our irrigation in the existing location in Kerchie Creek, and we want to also be able to put our well in that buffer area. We don't think that's going to create any problems to the gulch. Here's the pictures of the gulch. There's our irrigation line already in there. It's been in there for, you know, I don't know how long, but it's historically been there and we're going to keep it there. And then if you look at the top of the bank, 25 feet from there is where our well would go, in that location is where well. I don't think it would cause any disturbances. We don't even have to pull any trees out or anything. We just don't, the lot's so narrow that MDQ and the local permitting for wells won't let us move it any further east. So when I go back to here, you can see the well with that W right there. That's really our only spot. You see that big circle around it. That's 100-foot radius, and as we move it anywhere east, it falls off of our property. We no longer can have it. And we, of course, can't move it any further west because that's where the Kerchie Creek drainage is. So I'm hoping, hopefully you guys understand this one. This is very important. If we get, if we can't put our well there, I'm not, you know, we might be in a difficult situation. Maybe coming back to you in the future, trying to figure out how or getting an exception and, you know. So we just wanted to head that off. We don't think putting a well casing, you know, right in that location would cause any harm. And of course, our irrigation's already been there, so we don't, we're not, you know, can't fathom that you want us to move it or it needs to remove. It hasn't caused any damage. Again, here's, here's the photos of it. It's a dry gulch. It doesn't see water in it very often that we're aware of. So, you know, usually you have these buffers from riparian areas where it's a wetland or something and you want to stay back from it. We don't have that case here. We just have slopes that we wanted to stay away from. So that was our presentation. Appreciate your time. I'll just say that we've spent a lot of time on our DEQ portion of the project. We've got individual wells and septic systems, and they're going to be pressurized septic systems. We've done a lot of ground site-specific analysis in our office and with some subconsultants, and it looks to be a really great spot for houses. There's, when you have a drain fill, there's, looks to be about 50-plus feet of soil between the groundwater, so that's a really great separation. So we don't see any, any need for any other septic solutions other than individual systems. Anything else would significantly raise the cost of the, of the project. So with that, I'll take your guys' questions and appreciate your time.
Yeah, Paul, so you said there's a five-foot walking pathway north of the road. Did you mean north of this road or right here north of the, along the drainage road?
It's north of the center road, north of our road that we're proposing. We looked at doing a road on the Adams Street, but it dropped off so significantly that we couldn't pair anything near the road. It would, it would meander through the, it would meander, it would be very, difficult to, impossible to do. So we did look at doing a path along the Adams Street. It's just the topography, if you're familiar with it, it drops off right to our site. And I don't, we don't know that MDT would permit it, and it'd be very difficult to accomplish.
Roman, it's essentially right here, adjacent to the...
Oh, okay. And it goes from access on Adams to access on Adams?
Yeah.
And then, I know that in the past, I grew up around here, so like in the mid-'70s, one time Shirley Anderson was going to Missoula, right around here, and the interstate washed out, and she drove her Country Squire LTD into the, into the ravine, and it was, there was a whole bunch of water. We used to come off of that hillside and flood the field. So what happened to that issue?
It's been rerouted. What was happening was there was water coming from the spring box.
Right.
Flooding, coming down, and then it was being unmanaged, and it was just seeping or flowing down to the lower section. Dave has since rerouted that irrigation on his upper property, and it heads to the, it goes west, or excuse me, east now. So instead of coming across the highway, it's already been rerouted to the...
So it goes into Kerchie Gulch then?
It goes that way.
It goes that way?
Yeah, and that's where it'd end up, yeah.
So it's not...
It's not going to come across the interstate anymore.
Flooding down, I mean, it's in a ravine or it's in a spot that water should be?
Correct.
As opposed to just free flooding like it did?
That's, that's true, and our DEQ permit relies on that. We can't have water on our site like that, so Andy's already been making sure that we're, he's been hard, hard on us, I would say, to make sure that we prove that that's not going to be a problem, and we're committed to making sure that, you know, it doesn't go across. But it was just a mismanaged, unmaintained section of irrigation that created the flooding. And what we saw is it just drops off on the site. We monitored all around it. We couldn't find it. It just kind of, you know, we tried to see if it was creating a plume or something or, and it wasn't, interestingly enough. It was, we just kind of dropped off for now.
And then that Lot 36, the kind of the commercial one you're calling, that, between Kerchie Gulch, that's pretty dinky, small area. What kind of, how big of a store, would it be a coffee hut or would you imagine...
Yeah, a small shop. We think somebody who wants just a shop there, maybe a fixes, you know, they can have about 10 to, DEQ limits the septic system to 10 to 12 employees. Something small. No type of convenience store, none of those could be permitted. We think somebody's going to put a shop, and Dave's already been talking to somebody about putting a shop there and they can just have a place to do their business.
Okay.
Somebody work out of a shop. That's what we think it's going to be. MDT's approved, said that there's an acceptable approach on that location. It's getting closer to the intersection, but they said it's okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Have, have you pulled the easement access to the memorial plot and the cell tower that have been recorded with the State of Montana?
We have pulled all the records that we have, and we've shown easements on our plats, and we're going to guarantee those per the requirement. So yes, we're showing all the applicable easements and, those will show up on our plat, our final plat.
Well, without seeing exactly what you're talking about, you keep referring to the east side of the property, and that's where the easement access is to the memorial plot and then runs clear across the side to where 90 is.
Well, what we're talking about, when we're talking about the east, we're talking about the very far east. You're, the cemetery lot is in the eastern port, like eastern half of the site, but we're, we're in this distinct area that's east of the Kerchie Creek drainage. There's just a little piece of parcel there that we're talking about.
I think she's, I think she changed the subject to ask if, if the original easements, so the family can access the cemetery, has it been modified, changed, or can they, is it still there for the family to visit?
Those easements will never go anywhere. We have to show them exactly as they are on our plats.
Okay.
We've shown where we believe them to be here, and we'll confirm that again as our, we'll provide all the documentation and existing easements. I can kind of rub my finger too, but we've got a 20-foot easement right here along this lot, right to the cemetery. Well, here, so that's, that's a typical road access. You can, they have full rights to get there. And then right here, 20-foot private easement to the utility.
To the cell tower?
To the cell tower. Those are full roads, access. There's nothing you can prevent it. Really, it'll look like a gap here. Somebody might put their fence right at the edge and there'll just be a gap there for...
So just a wide enough path for a car?
Yeah.
A one-lane?
Oh, 20-foot is wide enough for emergency vehicles. That's, that's the standard around the state for, for a two-way road.
So Janine, the map is showing that the cemetery is still accessible with a 20-foot little pathway from, from the subdivision road into the cemetery. You can still access it and as well as an access road to the cell tower?
I just, I just want to make sure, especially for the memorial plot, because we, you know, as I stated in my response, I believe it went to Andy Short, that it was filed with the state, and it's wide enough so that should a family member need to get a hearse or, you know, whole funeral procession through there, it needs to be wide enough for that.
So the easement will be filed at the clerk and recorder's office on our final plat and memorialized that way?
It already is filed.
Yeah, and so then it has to show up on our plat. It's, it can't go anywhere. We, you know, there's nothing we could do to remove it. What it's going to look like is people will fence off around it. It's going to be a fenced off, it's going to look like a cemetery, actually, because there's going to be a big grassy pathway. People won't put anything there. It'll be fences right up against it, I'm guessing, you know. And so it'll look like a, it'll look like a cemetery lot now, kind of, you know. Now it's just, well, it's a lot in the middle of a field, but it'll, it'll look like a more defined cemetery lot with a wide access.
Yeah, Danny, a couple of points of clarification. The cell tower and the cemetery are both going to be at easements, right? You're not proposing lots?
They are, they're on lots.
They are. They're on tracks of record, I believe, but I could be wrong.
I'm certain, yeah.
Okay.
They're existing tracks.
So we're talking, at the end of the day, it's a...
And then just as a sidebar, because we, County Commissioner, get to deal with a lot of subdivision in which things were, there aren't any teeth in the covenants or what have you, and people are always wanting us to plow them out. What's the situation for the covenants that you have stated here? Will there be something that we don't have to worry about? People complaining that it's not getting done?
That's the intent, yes. And with these newer subdivisions, they put together the covenants and the road maintenance agreements and the homeowners association and bylaws. They try to put this together with as much teeth as possible. There are situations where, you know, there are 36 people here. You're probably going to get a couple of people who don't participate, and I know there's not a ton of teeth there, but what we've seen in these newer subdivisions is there typically is a group of people who take care of it, and all the mechanisms, all the requirements will be in the, be there. That doesn't mean it could go wrong, and they, they just, they don't, you know, covenants are only enforceable by individuals, and attorneys have to kind of get involved when they get too complicated. So it's not, it's not an imperfect method, but it is what, it is the standard that we're using around the state. It's, it's being used in Missoula, all around the, it's, the standard is these road maintenance agreements. And in theory, they're supposed to provide all of the maintenance for that road, including plowing. And so I'm confident with new homes here. These will be new, expensive homes. You'll have a pretty motivated HOA.
Okay.
You know, Danny, if he doesn't shovel aside while he gets an email that day in his subdivision, so, you know.
We just want the purchasers to be fully aware that we have the four-man crew of Mineral County to take care of all our roads. And when we have as much snow as we have, of course, we're all sympathetic to people not being able to get in and out, especially if it's a retired person and their river will drive, oil's won't be. So we don't want to have to tell people no, but we certainly cannot tell our four-man crew to get off and go help people because they think it's a crisis and they're a taxpayer of the county. These homes need to be, make sure that people know what they're buying and what they're doing because we can't, we can't overextend ourselves.
That, that makes a lot of sense. And realtors will have a packet of information that they ought to disclose.
Okay.
But they'll have to sign into all these, there's agreements. They have to sign into them. You know, they'll be violating the agreements if they don't participate in the maintenance.
Yeah, I was just, you know, in the past, we've seen, I've heard people say, "We have, we'll have covenants," and then we go to find out that the covenants...
Yep.
Really were just verbal or non-enforceable at any, at any stage. I know some people go to the extreme where they put a lien on their whatever, but some covenants around here are just good old boy, well, you said, you know?
Ours would be much more formal with that.
Okay.
I know the subdivision up here, if you don't pay your homeowner or your homeowner's fee, that it's assessed to your lot.
So, yeah, there was a variance request for streetlights. Our subdivision regulations are somewhat ambiguous about what that actually means. The planning board denied the variance and said that they'd want streetlights at the entrances.
Just the entrances, not through the whole thoroughfare.
Right. And so I'm taking the stance that they're not requesting the variance anymore and that that meets the regulation.
So don't even, that variance is a non-issue with a variance now because it's just going to be the lights at the entrance wave, which is smart because people might miss their turn otherwise on a dark snowy night. So I think it's good that you have them at the entrance.
That was the thought of the planning board as well. And then, post office, yeah, I haven't been able to get a response from those folks out of Frenchtown, but I've never seen it where they didn't require a closer... of Frenchtown, but I've never seen it where they didn't require a closed mailbox. And then, yeah, the Kerchie Creek setback, the irrigation system, we'll clarify it in the conditions, but yeah, there's no issue from having that irrigation system in there. That was the thought, that it was more when the lots developed that, you know, say it's a, say it's a wrecker service, right? And they're, you know, they're pushing cars over in the drainage and that's just kinda that's the, the idea. When it gets developed, that there'll be no disturbance.
Right.
To be clear, Andy, are you fine with the well there too?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I think we'll go through condition by condition. But I, you guys wanna public comment at this point?
Sure. We'll open it up for public comment before we move forward. Anybody on the phone or in the room want to comment on this proposed subdivision? Mr. Biggert?
Sure.
Yeah?
I got a few things to say. I, I struggled because I don't know if I should speak as a resident or as the mayor of Alberton, but I'll start with the mayor of Alberton. When the folks from IME, I just walked in when they're giving their presentation, so I didn't get to hear that, but I have asked for them to email me a copy of that so I can see it. They, they said the town of Alberton had a year to prepare everything. We've been following this without a doubt. Alberton's a small town. We've never dealt with the subdivision before, so this is a brand-new experience for myself as a mayor, for our council people, for our residents, for everyone that's involved and hasn't impacted this. Roman, I had reached out to you in August and you had sent me a text, and your text on Friday, August 27th, was the subdivision application had emissions and was not complete, and he sent it back for completion. Once he does receive it, it'll be about a 60-day clock with public care, and so far it hasn't been resubmitted. So that's the end of August. If we, if it did end up coming back in, say, September timeframe, we're talking a handful of months here. So this project to, for the town of Alberton doing it, based on what we've received here, is almost a $2 million cost to the town of Alberton to put a secondary tank in and a lift station and the facilities to be able to provide that water sewer services. So it's not like we just, all of a sudden, November timeframe, can sit there and say, okay, let's make this happen and move forward with it. We've got $2 million in our pocket, let's just use that. We did have to apply for some funding. We received partial funding. We didn't receive all of the funding. And I did let Dave and I let Andy and I let everyone know that. And we did just receive another opportunity that might help us be able to re, to get the rest of that funding. We, I've spoke with mayors all across the state of Montana, both small towns and large towns, and every single one of them came back and said, it absolutely makes sense for the town of Alberton to annex this property. And I know this isn't totally relevant to what you folks are doing here today because you're doing your job, but to be perfectly clear, the individual that's on the county subdivision planning board that lives in Alberton has never once come to a council meeting to discuss what the interests of the community are. Roman, you've been there a handful of times, I thank you for that. But I kinda feel that, you know, that individual that was on that planning board should have probably been a little more involved with the community to get an idea of what was going on with the community with that. That being said, I did visit with Dave and we talked about potentially the opportunity of, or not opportunity, but the possibility of annexation without providing utilities at this point. And so we're kinda looking at that from an engineering and a legal standpoint to see if that makes sense. But I just do wanna be perfectly clear that the town of Alberton hasn't been sitting on their ass for a year, not making decisions and not looking into this. That's not true. The town of Alberton's not excited about streetlights. The folks I've dealt with, I should say, they're not excited about the lack of streetlights in the subdivision. Chief Joe Callen, the fire chief's not excited about it. The town of Alberton's not really excited about the way that the trail is going to take place. I know there's a slope on the side of that road, but man, if any of us have ever driven to Lolo, there's a slope on the side of that highway that's bigger than the slope on the side of that road. It absolutely is possible to do some type of trail. It just would mean that they might have to cut into someone's yard by five or 10 feet to make it happen. So now there's gonna be a trail that's gonna go right through the middle of the subdivision. And the feedback that I've heard is there's concerns about at some point, the HOA saying, hell no, we don't want people going through there anymore. We've got homeless people filtering out from Missoula and they're getting dropped off by the interstate and they're walking through town and we don't want them coming through. And Andy has done a wonderful job of reassuring everyone that, that based on the way the documents are written, that that's not feasibly possible. But I just struggle because at the end of the day, that HOA, you'd think that they could change that. And then, you know, the other thing that I've heard from a handful of people is that the, you know, there were going to be trees along the interstate. And I know they've just requested that the trees not be planted. And then there was a comment at the last meeting that the west, whatever it's called, the subdivision on the west end of town, west Alvison, I forget, I'm drawing it right now because I'm a little flustered, but supposedly when that subdivision was approved, they were supposed to put up trees. They never did. Obviously, that subdivision took a really long time to come to play, but, I mean, I just, I don't see why a nice group of trees along that interstate on that south side. For one, you're gonna be able to see over it to see the beautiful mountains, you're still gonna see everything, it's not gonna block your view. All it's gonna block the view of is a semi driving down. It's gonna cut down on noise in that neighborhood. And to me, it just makes it look a little more appealing. And so those are the kinda the things that I've heard. And obviously, the town of Alberton, you know, you get, you guys get it too. You get half the people think this is exciting and we're gonna have more homes, the other half of the people think it's the end of the world, that it's beautiful field that we've all watched for some years is gonna be consumed by houses. But, you know, like I told Dave when we met a long time ago, I told him, nobody else came up with the money to buy the property so they didn't throw fit about it. So those are just my concerns and concerns that I have.
So Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
In summation, your concerns are, one, HOA possibly not allowing people on the trail. Two, trees would be beneficial. What was the other concern?
We just, you know, and I don't know that I'm, I struggle, I don't know that people that I've spoke with, if this is a big deal or not, but we're, at this point, they're talking about putting streetlights at each entrance. So there'll be streetlights at three locations within the subdivision, just at the entrance. So then immediately, once you drive into that subdivision, it's gonna be pitch black. And I know Dave said that that's wonderful because we, you know, we want that, we don't want that light pollution. But then one of your folks that was here at the subdivision planning board said that you folks in town here have these amazing lights that are modern, that don't project light up, it only projects light down, and so it doesn't affect it. And I just, I feel like when you got a neighborhood like that, I mean, I don't know, I love, I hike all over the mountains, I spend a lot of times out in the wilderness, so I understand light pollution. But I'll tell you, if I had a house in that neighborhood, I would like a street light up and down that road to kind of keep someone from rolling. I mean, I've got property out here in Lozo and I'm constantly wondering if someone's gonna roll off the interstate, it's me and meth and they can be on my door and do something. I just, I would feel a little safer in that neighborhood if there were streetlights in it, throughout the neighborhood. And maybe myself and the folks that we've visited about this are silly in thinking that. And, and I don't know, you know, mountain west estates, I don't know, are there streetlights out there? I don't even have a clue.
And then, of course, people could still put up their own light as they see fit on their property.
Yeah, yeah.
My mom has one of those lights at the co-op, charges her something like $10 a month and just pops on every night. It's like a neon or gas filled bulb and I kind of, you know, I don't want one for my place, but she likes having it. But, I mean, people can still put up lighting as they see fit, it's just not gonna be a publicly taxed, you know, HOA-paid-for lighting system.
Yeah, yeah. And again, like I said, take it with a grain of salt because it could be, you know, just, you know, but, but I don't know, if you take a grain of salt, when Chief Joe Callen calls and says it's tougher than hell to find houses when you can't see house numbers in the middle of the night when you're pulling through, when there's a, I mean, when there's an emergency or something, so.
Did the fire chief come in the planning board meeting?
No.
From Frenchtown?
He did, he did sign off on the fire prevention plan.
And Janine, did you have any further comments on the phone?
Well, I, you know, I think I made my concerns clear when I responded back in the beginning of November. Now, just the pure density of the proposal, given the size of the property, how it would affect, you know, all the wildlife and the elk that come down from the mountains and have been doing that for years and years and years.
Did, did the fishing game comment on the subdivision?
They did not.
They did not?
We asked for a comment though, and they never responded to us. Generally, fishing game, because I'm working with them on a separate project, generally their thought is, is that with like subdivisions like this, it's almost to have benefits since it's right by the interstate and between the interstate and another existing road to not have elk going through there anyway. So it's beneficial for interstate traffic as well as the community to not need that space.
Like it prevents them from being hit by the semis?
Yeah. It's kind of, that's been their, their conversations with me regarding that. This is not this project, I will say, but this was on a separate project and so, but I did email them specifically.
So that was one of the letters, Paul, that you've sent out to all the interested?
Yeah, I have some proof at the back. I sent out like a letter specifically to them with a layout of our subdivision, asking for their comment and if they had any concerns to contact me and if they still don't have any concerns regarding that.
And Mr. Mayor, here's a copy of the letter too that, that they sent to Joe Callen, a Frenchtown fire, asking him to reply with any comments or improvements that he's left to play.
Is this a copy or is this your?
I've actually worked with Joe Callen separately as well regarding the fire prevention.
Thank you, Roman.
Is it fenced where the elk couldn't come down?
No, but elk in general avoid human development and so...
I would have to argue with, in the past.
In the past, they have.
In the past, elk have avoided, you can drive between here and St. Regis, several fields between here and St. Regis and the elk are right up against the houses.
Oh, yeah.
We all know what the reason for that is and it's the wolf.
They're hoping that they don't want them to come down.
Yeah, and nobody's gonna want them right in their yard, but they do still come down. And, you know, they, their habits have changed dramatically.
And I will say, like, 13 years I've lived in Alberton, I've never seen elk on the lower meadows. I've seen them on the upper part of the property or the houses, but never on that lower.
Are these alphabetical if I'm looking for the fishing game?
Oh, I don't know.
It's in order according to the list that I...
Oh, I found it, accidentally, I found it.
It's in order according to the list that I received from the county so I can check to make sure I...
Sharon Rose at the Spurgeon Road Office, Montana Fish Park.
Yeah, and I would say that they're a lot less active than they used to be.
Yeah, they used to come in on almost all.
Like you remember at Shirock, they weren't, they didn't show up.
There was one at Seer where they came in and they strongly gave their recommendations against the density that was proposed.
Yeah, that was...
But, yeah.
There was a change in state law years ago that said that they had to, FWP had to substantiate all their comments and they stopped commenting.
Oh, really?
We've seen a lot less comments. Since this happened, we see a far less lot, like comments like you're suggesting.
Mr. Levinson?
Yeah, just to clarify at one point, this lower meadow is totally fenced off, so elk are not getting into it unless the gates left open, which I've done recently, but it's been fenced off for many, many years. I'm grateful by ownership, so.
I'm gonna jump that fence in.
Maybe hop them back in.
No offense.
And one other thing that I think is really exciting about this project is that we do have a water right from the Clark Ford, so we're gonna have irrigation for landscaping purposes on all of these properties. It's not gonna be one of those variance subdivisions where no one's got a bush growing because they only have well water, they're simply enough to do anything. So this is gonna be uniquely different than what's on the west side of Alberton, because it's gonna have trees growing around the homes. And trees growing around the homes is where you want the trees. It buffers the homes, it makes them more interesting to look at, far more significant than putting a line in along the freeway. You want them around the homes and bushes and flowers and lawns and things like that.
Dave's installing an irrigation system. If you didn't understand that, that's a requirement of this project.
So, yeah, one of my staff recommendations for the planning board was a landscaping plan barrier between the, and the planning board said, you know, kind of oblast. Paul, is it, last conversation I had with Danny, it was proposed that they're gonna bond or some kinda tool for all the improvements?
He would like that opportunity. We'd like the opportunity to do that, if possible.
So do you guys have any ballpark estimates of that?
Not today, we don't have ballpark cost estimates, but we would produce those as part of the improvements agreement. We'd get a, the bonding, the bid. We had a, Dave, if you got a cost from Cory, can we give you a cost?
Six hundred thousand so far to reduce the road and reduce the...
With the trail?
The trail.
The trail, the road and irrigation is around $600,000 is the bid we got.
Is that, that probably doesn't include like certifications, plans?
No, that would not, that would, we could add 30% to that, so.
Yeah, so that, that would be included in it?
Yeah.
You know, power, running power out there?
That was separate.
But that's what I'm saying, yeah, so that would just...
Yeah, we could list all that stuff, yeah.
Yes, there'd be a, a list of those things.
We're gonna try to get it installed as soon as possible, but...
So that's something that subdivision law rules allow, you know, we just talked about this on Friday with our, you know, there, there is some risk involved to the county, right? If, if the improvements aren't installed and whatever the mechanism is, we don't go after the mechanism. I, I think we would prefer a letter of credit with the improvements agreement. I think that's the mechanism we would want. And a local bank too. We, in the past, when we had those, we've had a local bank so we can actually, you know, it's not Dave's brother with a PO box.
We can work with a little bank.
Because that's, that's $600,000 is a significant risk.
Yeah, it's gonna be more than that. I mean, that's, you know, that's a cost from last year and it's going up, so.
Those little electric co-op, it's pretty spending.
Oh, there's gonna be Northwestern or a co-op doing the power?
Northwestern.
Is it?
Yeah, we've been coordinating with Northwestern for the last couple of years and they're behind for sure, to be sure. And so we've been trying to get them on our, on their schedule. Bonding for the improvements allows Dave to sell a couple of lots before all the infrastructure's in and to get some money, to have some capital. It's beneficial. You wouldn't see, all the center lots would, you can't sell those, nobody's gonna, you can't get to them. You know, you'd really be, you're talking about selling a couple of lots, but it allows us just to get to a point where we can get some revenue on the project.
What, I'm going back to that lot 36. What's the size of that? Probably not an acre, is it?
It's just around an acre, yeah.
Oh, one acre?
1.1.
1.1.
A lot of it is undevelopable though because of Kerchie Creek, so the actual space, a shop or a small outfit, plumber or electrician or something like that to put it, it's pretty small.
Excluding that one, the average of the rest of the 35 approximately?
Right at one still, yeah. Like 1.03, I think, so right at, right at an acre.
Any more public comment? While you have the floor?
And what, what are the rules, Andy, on the mayor's concern about an HOA to the kind of private land, sort of public but sort of private, saying that you can't have somebody walk on a trail?
We'll get into that in the conditions.
Okay.
But yeah, they remind me, I was gonna ask for like a two-minute timeout here.
Okay.
And I'll come back and we'll go through the conditions.
Oh, you wanna take a little intermission?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, we will take a little brief intermission. All right, we'll resume now after intermission. Take it away, Andy.
Okay, yeah, let's just run through the conditions and then we'll stop on anything that seems odd or out of place or you wanna discuss. So number one is boilerplate, the state and the final plat and associated documents and plans, as well as all related improvements for the subdivision shall meet all applicable design standards, improvements and other requirements of the Mineral County subdivision regulations and the administrative rules of Montana. Condition two, the applicant is proposing to provide cash in lieu of parkland dedication. So we had a, we had them have an appraisal done, so we knew what that number was for this meeting. A recent appraisal of the value on a per-acre basis is $6,700. You know, that's undeveloped, right? Based on our subdivision regulation calculations, the dedicated number will be $15,008. And what we'll do is, we have a fund for that, we talk about it every year, yeah, we've got a fund for that. got a fund for that, and so we'll earmark this for monies to be spent in that area. So, you know, that might, that might help out Alberton in the end, you know, if they've got some project over there, and we can attach it to like a, you know, a park program. I, you know, in this scenario, I feel like that's applicable, as opposed to requiring them to do parkland, just because you get this little parkland piece that maybe no one uses.
Right, grows weeds.
The proposal shall be reviewed, number three, the proposal shall be reviewed by the Mineral County Environmental Health and Planning Department for water supply, sewage, disposal facilities, stormwater runoff, and solid waste, but final review by the Montana Department of Environmental Quality. The certificate of subdivision approval shall be filed with the plat. Number four, covenants will be provided that must include declaration of maintenance agreements or some other form of maintenance plan for the interior subdivision pedestrian trail shall be reported with the final plat. Covenants must include future maintenance costs to be shared equitably and provide for private enforcement. The covenants will be filed with the final plat. Number five, covenants that must include declaration, the covenants must include a declaration of maintenance agreements or some other form of maintenance plan for the subdivision irrigation system that will be recorded with the final plat, also including future maintenance. Number six is waiving the right to future improvements of Adam Street, so if there was an RSID out there for Adam Street improvements, everyone out there would waive their right to protest that, being part of that.
What would be an example of that?
It would be, you know, so the, so say they had a rural special improvement district, right, and they're like, hey, we're going to, we're going to improve this.
We're going to put streetlights all the way out of Adam Street.
So there's, the people that live there are creating impact, it would be more for like roads, but they would, you know, everyone there is creating an impact on the roads there. And so if they're like, hey, we got to, we got to do something about the road, the RSID is just a tool. I don't know if there's ever been one in Mineral County, but...
One, no.
One. Okay, interesting.
There's some lighting one, like Saltine.
Yeah, that's separate, that's a lighting district.
Special improvement district, SID, not a RSID.
Okay.
Yeah, if you go up down the interstate, all of a sudden there's lights in Saltine.
So say, exact scenario, right, so they want to make some kind of improvement, the folks living here know that they can't waive their right to be a part of it, they have to be a part of it if it transpires. And we just kind of do that on all new subdivisions. Covenants for maintenance of the interior subdivision road will be included with the final plat, that includes future maintenance. Number eight, a road approach permit must be obtained from the Montana Department of Transportation for all three approaches on Adam Street. So that's state-controlled road, so they, that third, you thinking about the third one?
Yeah, is that the cell tower?
That's going to be the, the commercial lot.
Oh, the 36 lot, okay.
Stop signs will be installed at each intersection of the interior subdivision road, so the planning board was adamant about this, you know, my thought was that the MDT will dictate that, but the planning board requested that. The road construction plans and specifications must be submitted for, to the Mineral County Environmental Health and Planning Department. Name of the engineer that will certify that the proposed road has been constructed in Mineral County standards must be read prior to site work on the proposed subdivision. Certifications by the designing engineer that the road will be built according to plans and certifications will be provided prior to the final plat. And then there's some, there's some language about bonding, but we'll, we'll come full circle on that, I've just kind of got a blanket statement on that. But obviously, if they bond for it, they have to have an improvements agreement that our office approves, they have to have three bids, the high, you take the highest bid, multiply it by 125%, and then that's the funding mechanism that they have to provide. That would also include certifications as builds. The new roads will be paved in accordance with the Mineral County road standards. Number 12, all new electrical utilities serving lots must be installed prior to final plat. All new electrical utilities must be placed underground to reduce the potential for irrigation for ignitions in forested areas wherever practical. Number 13, right to farm language shall be placed on the face of plat notifying prospective lot owners of surrounding agricultural practices, which can be offensive to residents of the subdivision. The language shall state lot owners waive any right to protest offensive activities associated with normal agricultural practices. Number 14, I like, I call this the Denly statement. An open range statement shall be placed on the face of the final plat. Statement shall inform prospective lot owners that they must be responsible for any fencing to keep livestock out of their lots, and that the surrounding area is open range. Number 15, gate posts or other fencing shall not be constructed in road easements without prior approval from the governing body. Number 16, so this was negotiated at the planning board?
So stop there.
Yeah.
What is the governing body on that section?
You guys.
Not the HOA.
Right. And there's, you know, there's a caveat in there that, yeah, any of these conditions, if there was a condition change, any of these conditions, they would have to go through a public process to contain, change those conditions. Number 16, the developer shall donate $100 per lot to the Mineral County Sheriff's Department to be dispersed by the Mineral County Treasurer at time of final plat. The fire prevention and control plan must be implemented before the governing body will approve the final plat, and will be considered part of the subwriter's obligation for land development. The local fire chief or designee will inspect and approve the implementation of the fire prevention and control plan. The plan will not be considered fully implemented until the fire chief has given written notice to the governing body or planner that the plan has been completed as approved by the governing body. And it will meet all necessary elements based on our subdivision regulations. Number 18, so that included 20,000 gallons of storage, and there'll be two separate sites for that, 10,000 gallons, 10,000 gallons. I had a typo in the original approval, it said 40,000 gallons, yeah, so that might, that actually might say it in yours, but it's 20,000 gallons. Number 19, pedestrian trail construction plans and specifications must be submitted for review to Mineral County Environmental Health and Planning Department. Same, same, pedestrian trail, roads, irrigation system, all the language is the same. Number 20, the developer will be responsible for the cost of a cluster mailbox and installing a concrete pad for box installation. The postal service requests the plans to be submitted for review, snow removal around the mailboxes shall be responsible, the Lower Meadows Emergency Association. So this is, this is where the applicant requested a change to this, that if mailboxes are allowed by the USPS, then they would prefer that. I'm assuming you guys have no problem with that.
If the post office, yeah, let it be their decision, I guess, huh?
Well, it will be their decision.
Apparently, there's like a new postmaster in Frenchtown, and it's having a connect.
How about, and the one in Alberton doesn't have enough clout?
So I'm not going to address some language now, but I'm just going to make a note, if mailboxes are allowed, we will allow, but I'll work on that language. Number 21, the legal and physical access for the proposed lots within the subdivision will be noted as public easements on the face of the plat. Number 22, all taxes assessed must be paid in full prior to filing the final plat. Mineral County Treasurer signs off on the final plat that they've been paid. Number 23, so we'll require a title report within 30 days of the final plat application. Ellen will review that for accuracy, any omissions. Then that's number 24. We, and we almost always do that, so she's pretty busy, so when you're looking at final plat, you want to get that title report in front of hers as soon as you can. The developer shall pay $950 plus $85 per lot for final plat review and approval, or whatever the fees are at the time of filing. In lieu, number 27, in lieu of rural addressing plan for the subdivision, the final plat shall include language to inform any future lot owners that an address must be assigned by the Mineral County Environmental Health and Planning Department. So we will sign addresses as it's developed. Number 28, the subwriter shall provide a weed management plan, which I believe you guys already, yeah, you already, they already have an approved weed management plan. Number 29, boilerplate language about face of the plat. And this is where we have that statement, these covenants may not be repealed or amended without prior written consent of the Board of Mineral County Commissioners, and the Board of Mineral County Commissioners is party to this restricted covenant and may enforce its terms. So this is where, you know, John was talking about, you know, the HOA coming back to change this thing. That would have to be a public process through you guys.
So then back, and so what you said there, citizen turn, that kind of relate to number 21, legal and fiscal access for the proposed lots will be noted as public easements? So it's public, not only the road but that trade-off?
Yeah, so there'll be a, yeah, right, so there'll be a statement that basically says, this is dedicated to the public, however, it's not, it's, maintenance is responsible, responsibility of the homeowners association. And I think there's, I think there's another, you kind of belt and suspend it on that condition. Get to that one. Number 31, the subwriter shall submit evidence with the final plat that reserve all or a portion of the appropriated water rights owned by the owner of the land to be subdivided and transferred these water rights to the homeowners association for use by the landowners within the subdivision. There's a typo. To have a legal right to the water and reserve, instead of any remaining surface water from the land, so at the time of final plat, they'll have to, there's a whole bunch of water rights associated with the whole ranch, now that's getting, now you're getting sections off. This is the Clark Fork water right, comes from under the interstate, so that'll have to be settled before final plat. Number 32, so this is the same statement, just instead of roads, irrigation system, that it'll, it'll be part of the improvements, and it'll have, future maintenance will be provided for, as-built plans will be provided to us after construction is complete. Number 33, additional language about water rights, the water right allocated for the community irrigation system will be transferred to the homeowners association prior to final plat. A document that ensures water availability from the Clark Fork River in favor of the Lower Meadows major subdivision homeowners association will be filed along with the final plat. The water rights for the irrigation system shall be issued by the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation prior to the final plat application. And an equitable method of water rights assignment for Lower Meadows subdivision will be recorded with the DNRC prior to final plat. So the way they have it set up out there now is the DEQ is going to allow individual wells, but they're going to be restricted to a certain flow. So you can irrigate this much of your lawn, or you can use this much for consumption, but it's limiting, so that's going to be, the, all the, you know, irrigating the lawns and the trees and the gardens will be done by the irrigation system itself, so that's how they're supplementing it. Public access easement for the existing historical cemetery lot must be established in perpetuity for the benefit of visiting relatives, and the access must be available and passable, and passable in perpetuity. We kind of worked this one out at the planning board, how to draft that language. Is this what you're referencing, Ron, in number 35? So, in our subdivision regulations, right, it says you'll have this statement on the, on the, on the final plat, so the above-described tract of land is to be known and designated as Lower Meadows major subdivision, and the lands included in all roads, avenues, alleys, trails, and public parks or public squares shown on said plat are hereby granted to the use of the public forever. The roadways are accepted for public use, but Mineral County accepts no responsibility for maintaining the same.
Okay.
The owners agree that Mineral County has no obligation to maintain the roads hereby dedicated to public use. Put in toward roads or trails. Number 36 is just that a homeowners association will be formed, and the homeowners association and its covenants, bylaws, and easement agreements shall be reported with the final plat. Homeowners Association shall have language in it, in its governing documents to assess for maintenance and grading the subdivision road, installation, and take out the rating since it's going to be paid. Installation maintenance, drainage improvements, if apple, dust abatement, I'll take out dust abatement. Snow removal and noxious weed control, as well, as well as other responsibilities of the association. Homeowners Associations form and maintain listed items in this section shall be formed to run with the land and not have provisions for termination. Number 37, this, this already might, already actually be accomplished, we haven't worked it out, but the property will be annexed in the Frenchtown Regional Fire District prior to final plat. A no-build, no-alteration buffer, buffer 25 feet from the top of the banks of the Kerchi Creek drainage shall be shown at the face of the plat. So, yeah, so we'll make a note on there that, yeah, that that won't, won't stop the installation of well irrigation improvements, I'll work on that language a little bit. Number 39, streetlights will be installed with the two residential access points for Adam Street.
Does that mean one light at each, or is it...
You know, it's ambiguous, isn't it?
But, yeah, I mean, I don't care, I just wondered what that meant.
Yeah, I don't know, have you guys thought about what you're proposing?
Probably be a big tower, you know, pole at each.
A single light?
Yeah, a single, probably, we'll look at our options and come up with something that's good.
Number 40, in addition to describing dimensioning and showing the location of utility easements and their true and correct location on the plat with dashed lines, the following statement must appear on the final plat. You understand hereby grants unto each and every person firm or corporation, whether public or private providing or offering... public or private, providing or offering to provide telephone, telegraph, telegraph, electric power, gas, cable television, water or sewer service to the public, the right to joint use of an easement for the construction, maintenance, or repair and removal of the lines and other facilities in, over, and across each area designated on this plat as utility easement, having to hold forever. 41, this might be new, this is new to everyone. This is a blanket statement for public improvements. If the subdivision chooses to enter into a subdivision improvements agreement guaranteeing the public improvements through a letter of credit, three bids for the cost of installation of the public improvements shall be obtained by the subdivision. The amount of the guaranteed shall, the amount of the guarantees shall be calculated by multiplying 125% by the highest bid. As the public improvements are installed, the subdivision shall provide a letter to the governing body indicating such, and including a copy of the engineer plans. Prior to lease of the guarantee, a copy of the plans stamped by the project surveyor engineer in accordance with the license, with their licensing provisions, shall be filed in the clerk and court's office with reference to the final subdivision plat. The subdivision improvements agreement and bonding tool will be reviewed and approved by the Mineral County Environmental Health and Planning Office prior to acceptance of the final plat application. And then number 43 is just that this, you know, that, so within 30 working days, we'll give you a signed agreement from the commissioners. If they, if they vote here today, they can conditionally approve this. And then from the date of that letter, you'll, they'll have three years. Three years.
Three years to complete what?
To complete, to file final, the final plat. So obviously, if there's, if they file the final plat without the improvements installed, the bonding, the bonding mechanism, I'm going to require two years, right, that improvements will be installed within two years. But they'll have three years to file this plat. If they don't, they can come back for an extension.
What generally is a requirement to be able to file the plat? Just the road, just the power, all of it?
Um, yeah, so, it, yeah, all of it. They either bonded for all of it, or it's installed.
Okay.
Yeah. Every condition, every, all 43 conditions here must be met.
Paul, you were able to read along up there, too?
We agree with all the conditions, and we appreciate that.
You're okay with everything as stated? Anything else, Andy?
That's it. Little surprising, one of the largest subdivisions in Mineral County in some time, and not a lot of poll participation, I think that's interesting.
I guess you did have some to do with the planning board, didn't you?
We did, we had it in the dark, we had it with camping lights.
Well, I, I appreciate the planning board, because like I said before, that I've been, before I was a commissioner, there have been some subdivisions where the planning board had some recommendations and, and wishes, and there were some things wrong with it all the way around, not just one thing, but many, and it was totally ignored. So I, I for one try to put a lot of, give respect and credibility to the planning board for their efforts and their work, and being that they don't have any real heartache with this, other than a few recommendations of streetlights and stuff, I'm, I'm okay with what they've put together.
Yeah, I think it's put together well.
No, I agree with you, yeah, they're, they're extremely helpful. You know, they're, it's a, it's an interesting group, lots of, you know, Denly's been on there for 50 years, you know, so lots of resources. Yeah, yeah, they're great.
Okay, so today the action item is going to be put in the form of a motion to?
Yeah, so a motion to approve Lower Meadows Major Subdivision with conditions as, as written, say.
Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion to grant.
Yeah, Commissioner Simons has moved to approve preliminary plat approval of Lower Meadows subdivision with the conditions stated that we just recited.
I'll second that.
A second by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any further questions or discussion from anybody before a vote? Mr. Logi, you just walked in.
Yes, well, I was a little late getting, getting out, but I think we reviewed this pretty well at the, at the planning board meeting.
Yeah.
So the developer and the commissioners accepted all conditions as, as we developed at the planning board.
I think the way things are looking, you know, we, agriculture through the years has been the, that was one of, part of our discussion, through the years it was being done, but you can't force people to do agriculture, and it's not being done there anymore. And there is a need for, for lots, so I think it's, you know, the timing now, it's different than it would have been even five or 10 years ago.
Yeah.
So I think it's, it's something where it will accommodate, and we saw what happened on West Side Alberton here in the last two years. There's a need.
Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that will conclude till public comment. Start this one. Okay, we'll start the weed board appointment. We've got, so Dwayne, a couple things have happened at the, the weed board. A while ago, Alvin Meeks passed away, and Deborah Regan, who used to come to the weed board meetings on behalf of the Forest Service, decided, after she retired, she would fill his spot. And then, Phil Donnelly passed away, and he was the central representative, and Jim Lowman has been on the weed board, but he's an at-large member, so that means he, at-large, anyone in the county can be on that position, but Phil Donnelly's specific to the central area. So we've had kind of a lack of applicants, like today we only have one, so Jim Lowman offered to, if we would appoint him to be the central representative now, that would free up his at-large, so maybe we'd have a better chance of finding another appointment, because now it could be the entire county. So, and then Mr. Efta, I assume must have let his expire, no longer interested, so that's why there's a west end opening.
Okay.
And so we have a single applicant, but we have two vacant positions, so this one can fill the west end one. If we move Jim Lowman to the central, then we'll just have one vacancy, which is easier to fill, because it could be the entire county, and maybe even Mr. Logi is interested in applying.
Yeah, I think he is.
So, so before us here today, I guess first of all, we have Michelle Lower, who has applied. She's from DeBorgia to be the west end representative on the Mineral County Weed Board. And I guess, I've never met her, but she writes on here how she's served on the DeBorgia Cemetery for a number of years, and is a treasurer, and she's interested in the prevention and containment and suppression of noxious weeds and invasive species, and she is fine with traveling and meetings and educational opportunities, which the weed board, they do have some statewide meetings once in a while, so she sounds enthusiastic, and being that she's our only applicant.
Yeah, I would make a motion to appoint her then.
Okay.
I'll second that.
A motion to second to appoint Michelle Lower of DeBorgia, Montana, to be the west end representative for Mineral County Weed Board. All in favor, say aye.
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 We make a motion to appoint Jim Lowman to the central district position and leave the at-large position open for applicants.
I would second that motion.
Okay. All in favor of Commissioner Johnson's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And I will take these up to Kellyanne, make sure we get it straight on her books. Okay, so I guess that concludes that until public comment in two minutes. We'll let Denly speak. Start public comment, Mary, we have a person from the public.
Well, and I'm not here for any special thing, I just, one of the things, I wondered, did, we never did hear back from Brinkmeyer?
No.
Not a word back.
Angela, or Willie asked me that Tuesday.
Yeah, and I was just curious on that. The other thing is, I was going to just say, tell, tell your plow crew that now with what we've been getting here lately, I think they're doing a great job.
Yep.
Pass the word long, they never hear that.
No, they don't.
I've had, I've had one complaint, wow, two complaints again. They push snow into where the fire truck comes out at the west end, and they must have cut the corner a little bit and got stuck, but I called Jason and they pushed it back,
Nope, nobody's called me.
Yeah, anyway, you know, the way that things are going, it's, it's tough. I, I'm a little disappointed with the state out here on Mullin, on the front roads. I'm still real disappointed on that, but as far as the county, I think they're doing a great job.
So I came back from Pablo yesterday and went to Ravalli and come across, because I didn't want to drive down Charlo Road, and wasn't too bad from Ravalli to Perma, or about where the fishing access is there, from there on, I don't think they'd even touched it for 24 hours. Sure didn't look like it to me. I mean, you were, only met two trucks.
And I know it's tough, too.
I know it is, yeah.
Some of them are shorthanded, and then I do have to say.
They had the cutoff, they had the cutoff pretty good, but I hit that right there when the trucks was, one was going one way and the other one was going the other way, so.
And, and part of the problem, I mean, there's a bunch of us in that age group that retired in the last five years. And when you got the experience that's gone, I mean, it doesn't matter even by accident, you learn something in 20 years, it's a little quicker than a new guy.
Yeah.
And so that's part of it.
You just don't know.
Yeah. But I, I haven't heard any, any complaints about the county, except people are always , oh, how come my driveway gets plowed in?
That's probably in St. Regis towns.
And that's hard in town, when there's that many driveways.
That's the nature, that's the nature.
They don't, they don't turn their plow.
Did you, did you see somebody complaining the other day about burying the fire hydrants here in Sperry? Well, where in the heck are they supposed to put it in? Oh, oh, there's a fire, wait.
Well, that's not even the county, that's the city.
Oh, no.
But, but it is, and that's part of the problem, and people have to understand, you, you got to plow it off the road.
Yeah.
And their driveways are responsible.
And I'll tell you what, I have driven those streets in St. Regis, and how Jason maneuvers that truck down there.
With cars and everything, yeah.
You know, the, the low-income housing there, down there by Erwin Bill's old house, the trailer houses, those cars were supposed to park in the back of that lot. They don't, they park right on the street, and instead of parking like that, they park in on an angle and they stick halfway out in the street. I told him, I don't know what's going to happen there, you know, it's going to get narrower and narrower. I did see a garbage can there, it was kind of stuck in the snow.
Yeah, I know, I've seen a few of them.
Well, I have to pretty soon, you have no place to put the snow in.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I was just wondering if there's anything, you guys have any questions for me, that anything I could try to help with?
Trying to think.
I saw Dylan just got like 1. some million bucks ARPA money for a Dylan.
Oh, Dylan.
For dealing with.
Water.
Water ditch.
You see, Lolo's going to, Missoula's going to do that, too. But I wonder if that ain't the same money that we'd already got.
I think, I think it is, it just got, they just brought a check down to them, or made a, made a big show of it for the news.
So did you ever get any response from Emily on that email?
Uh-uh. No.
And one of my, one of my, I kind of pushed and talked a little bit, I thought with the sewer at St. Regis, I, I thought they should have put in a, instead of trying to share money, I think, I thought they could have just put directly for that repair of the sewer across the river, that project.
For, for that hole.
That project alone, standalone project for some of the ARPA, because that, that was partly, I mean, it was designed for water and sewer.
Yeah.
And that's direct, and that's, and then, because I think she put in for some other grant, but I was thinking if, if they took that one specifically alone, and I don't know that she sorted that out.
Yeah, she, Brenda Snyder sent an email out here a week or so, or better ago, that the language in there said that ARPA grant was only for unincorporated, isn't that what she said it said? And that would have left Superior in Alberton now. But Emily never ever responded to her, but I seen.
See, if I have her cellphone, maybe she'll.
And, and part of the problem is too, is that the ARPA stuff, nobody, nobody can get quite a set answer, because the rules, it's kind of a moving, moving target.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like using Title III money.
Yeah.
Can you? Well, yeah, we can, you know, but no, you can't.
Speaking of Title III money, Carol said the other day at, at the coalition meeting that she had talked to the BLM gal in Missoula, that a survey of the state line would cost some money, and they'd have to find a way, maybe the Forest Service would have to pay for that, you know, to get that re, remarked. And I was, after I went home, I got wondering, that could be a rack project.
Yeah, it might.
To pay for it.
Yeah.
And that.
You couldn't do it under Title III, though, because I'm pretty sure it.
But see, rack is Title II.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a rack project, and it's before service ground, and it would be, it would be beneficial to Mineral County, it doesn't necessarily affect water or roads, but half the money, only half the money's for water and roads.
And why, why should we continue to pay all their overheads?
Yeah, yeah.
What, who are you talking to about the next day?
Carol Johnson brought it, brought it up at the coalition, that she had been talking to Carolyn Upton, and, or to the gal from BLM in Missoula, and she was going to bring it up to Carolyn Upton.
Thank you.
About how to pay, because that's where part of the problem. But I would think, and I, I told Carol Johnson, I said, you know what you need to ask, just ask Carolyn, and I, I asked it before, but Carolyn didn't have the answer, but she needs to find the answer. What map is she using for pilting?
That's what I was going to ask you next, because they found that out.
Yeah, and, and that should be a simple.
That should be something they have hanging on their wall.
Absolutely.
How often do they know?
Because it's so important to them.
Yeah, well, they got to write a check every year based on it, so you think they'd know what they're writing the check for?
They know exactly where the line that they're using.
Yeah. I agree.
Except that they never realized there was a question on it, I guess. But, well, they should have by now. Anyway, so I think that's something, too, we'll have to pursue when the rack applications go out.
Yeah, so how often are you, is the rack back to go?
Should be around this spring or summer.
Yeah, right now, there's some positions that expired, and so they're.
Like, non-congress to approve them?
Well, they don't have to anymore.
Well, they don't have to anymore, they changed it.
Yeah, they can do it here, but right now, they're, they solicited for applicants that want to be on the rack committee, so.
That ought to, I guess this is your dawn?
Oh, I didn't see it. Thank you.
That ought to speed up the process, and since it's been so long.
Yeah, yeah, so hopefully this, at least this summer, I would think.
Yeah, and I was going to try and, I've got to be in Ellen at twice, once next week, and then once toward the end of the month, and I was going to try and get ahold of the Attorney General and see if. Attorney General, and see if he could put a little push on it. Because, I mean, Idaho, I don't know if Idaho's even aware of it. And I, you know, I'd ask Ron Catlett, too, to try and approach.
Well, their DOT is aware of it, we can see that from the pavement.
Absolutely, and that's, and that's where the, it should be a cut and dry and slam dunk.
Who directs them?
Either that, or, either that, or, I mean, I would, we'd be glad to give them.
Yeah, yeah.
I think in the whole, long run, we would gain if we gave them that place, but...
Yeah, better place to turn around, instead of getting hit all the time.
Well, and now replacing the concrete again, and that's about $5 million a mile. If they could give up 900 feet, they'd save, just on construction cost, and then the maintenance, wouldn't have to have the dangerous turnaround, but I'm not pushing to move the state line, I'm just saying that, that, from that standpoint, where the highway was built, it's so obvious. When we stood up there and looked down, and that's what I've done for so many years.
Too bad we, we should have included a photograph, computer-printed photograph with our letter, because I took a couple pictures with my little cell phone that day, we were up there, just like, man, the contrast is just glaring.
Well, I guess that's all I have, that's all I came to sit in on.
What's going on with the PSC? I see some letters in the paper now and again.
Well, there's some redistricting, I guess, because the numbers are not matching up for equal districts.
There was someone that wrote a letter, he was a previous PSC, or maybe he was a judge or something, and he'd retired now, and he said that he thought it was unusual that we pay our, the PSC people like $112,000 a year, and of course, then the response was, well, Montana does a fair comparative to neighboring states, and then the guy that wrote the letter said, yeah, but those neighboring states that pay $112,000 have three commissioners only, why, and we have five, so we're paying an additional two people, an additional $224,000. So I didn't know how that ever did get started, that we have five and not three like the other.
Yeah, and I don't know how, the background to all of that, and I know there's been some real question on, that, what's expected of them, too.
Yeah, yeah, the meetings are just, what, two or three times a month? And they're doing them Zoom from home now?
So there's some real, real discussion on that.
Anything else on your interim committees that you've been talking about?
Well, we'll be, the 20, I think it's the 27th, I'll be in Helena, and that'll be, we'll be discussing electric cars, we'll be discussing bicycles.
Electric bikes?
Well, just bicycle, maybe some bicycle license type stuff and funding, and, well, the ATVs, not this session before last, put that $20 sticker on the ATVs, and that money went to summer trails.
I think it's horseshit. It would be different if we had trails.
Yeah.
Well, it's supposed to go to trails, and some places benefited from it, and there are some trails, and I think...
But there are probably trails that don't allow ATVs.
Well, and Heather, I think, and that's one of them, what I keep pushing, to try and make either Burr Saddle or Four Mile Flat. To go around and make, and that would come out of that trails money.
And that would be fine, that would have something to show for it.
Benefit, because there'd be some signing and some stuff.
I paid it, I've got one on my...
But anyway, that's, and the whole theory there was, and I, let me tell you, in Helena, the ATVs came in in support of it, they really did, and that's why it passed. Well, and that's certain areas.
Certain areas in the state do, yeah.
Yeah, we're able to, and I think here, if there was enough of an organization where they could put in, and, you know, they could probably get some funds.
So what they want to do here is close roads and call it an ATV track, you know, I mean, state line, water grid.
Right, that's different, that's the Forest Service, and it's not designing their own trail system. And I think Sanders County was working on it, and...
We were working on it when Tanya Brummett was here.
Yeah, right.
You know, that was the beginning, not but when they...
The west end.
When they did the little bypass around the two mile there, you know, but then it just kind of went.
And that would have qualified in the funding part of it. But anyway, so that's what the interim, and that'll be, it'll, some be discussion on that, and that'd be partly with the, like I say...
Take some of that.
With an idea of trails, some of it going into trails, because what the highway department ends up spending on just the paint stripe alone, and the bikes demand and no pay. So that's why that ends up in part of the discussion. Part of the discussion of the interim committee will be, there was a, this last session allows the highway department, especially on the interstate, they'd be able to put in like some pipelines, or some, it would be internet corridors, whatever they need to try and improve the internet access, and they could use the highway right of ways for some of that, and that wasn't allowed before.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and so highway department...
That's why it's in the railroad, then?
Part of it, yeah. Yeah, and so the idea, well, part of that was if they developed some hydrogen, trying to push the hydrogen gas down to Utah, if they had a hydrogen plant out of Butte. So they needed, at least to be able to use the corridor if needed, and so the highway department has to come up with some guidelines, they haven't yet, but of that use. Let's see, the other discussion will have, like I say, electric cars, some type of licensing.
Have you talked with George at all about that survey dome thing?
Yeah, and I missed the phone call the other day, they were, time I got stuck and got home, I missed it. So I, I know he keeps pushing, and it was cur dam, they were supposed to have a discussion with Northwest Energy on cur dam and the power, some of that. Yeah, he keeps, he keeps pushing on that for solar power. George always has lots of, lots of things going. That's why I say, I know he said he would consider maybe weed board if he didn't find any, but he's already going in so many directions and...
Are you interested in the weed board, at large?
No, I got enough.
Enough iron in the fire?
Yeah, I got enough going. I was thinking if Matt Eisenbacher were around, I'd mention it to him, but he's on a, on a selling trip. He makes fishing lures.
Oh, really?
Bass lures.
Oh, really?
And he does an online marketing system, and he's, right now, he's at these sporting shows. He had five shows.
Kind of like Ty was doing that here for a while, maybe he still does.
So he's...
I've never, I bought a box from him, and I've never ever used him. Never had time. Well, it's quite an ice jam on the flathead.
Oh, is that right? I haven't been that way.
Down there by Perma, and where you can see the river good, you know?
I guess I have a lunch date.
Yes, you do.
I'm going to, I'm going to leave public moment, I'll let you, public comment, I'll let you, vice chair, somebody's wanting to meet me at lunch over.
Okay, well, he said he was done.
I am done.
Okay, we're done with public.
And I'll take, yeah.